Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity we have to come here tonight and meet in behalf of the teachers and students in this school district. We ask that thy blessing will be upon us, that thy Spirit will attend us and help us to make decisions that are in their behalf. We thank thee so much for this opportunity to serve and we are thankful for everyone that supports us and we ask these blessings and favors in Jesus' name. Amen.
Call to order the November 12th, 2023 means school board meeting is 13th. The 13th, 2023 board meeting to order.
You're ready? Go ahead. First item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. In that, you have the minutes from or the agenda for tonight, you have the minutes from 10:09:23, the minutes from 10:16:23, and the minutes from 11:06:23, and the district financials.
There's no questions regarding consent agenda, I will take a motion to approve. Natalie has seconded by Josh Almeyer. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we're going on to the special reports. We have our faculty and staff members who have been recognized in the Positive Impact Recognition Program. And tonight, we have Kerry Davidson, Amanda Vines, and Melinda Wood. Who have been selected randomly from all of the teachers who have been turned in. Matt spins a big wheel, Wheel of Fortune, then goes round and round and selects these names randomly. So if I can get them to come on up and get their award.
You got a good one, didn't you?
Yeah, this was donated by Harvest. This lab was there in the room.
I think we should, like, Melinda is the vocal choir and we still do band too?
Uh, no, just choir.
Just choir at middle school and high school. Kerry, of course, is secretary, which without her, you can't do school.
She is my everything.
And I apologize, I did not bring in the statements that were written about them. I left them out there. I usually read those out loud, but I will send that to them and to you all so that you all can read that. But before they leave, they have to promise to get a picture. They're more than welcome to stay during the entire. But anyway.
If they want to go get the picture now, they can't because.
We appreciate y'all. Second is our student attendance award. This student was randomly selected from not missing a day of school in October. Once again, I invited them to attend, but they are not required. And the picture that you have in front of you is the student who won. There were 487 students this time from across our district who had not missed a day. And Daniel Efren Perez-Munroy was randomly selected from the middle school. For some reason, the middle school keeps popping up. See, that streak continues for next month as well. So congratulations to Daniel. He got a certificate and an award as well. He got a basket from Harvest as well. So we thank Harvest for their participation in recognizing our students and our teachers today. The student achievement report, reporting things. Matt submitted this and unfortunately, he is not here to take review any of it tonight. But I'll let you go through it. This is basically what kind of screeners that we have, monitoring in each building that we do, testing, just in general, compiled by the buildings. It's a, you know, if you have a specific question for any building, that's the ones that are here that can answer it for you. We do a lot of monitoring, a lot of progress monitoring, a lot of academic testing in general throughout the year, so.
How are yours looking right now, Jennifer?
We're about to hit our next round, our mid-year.
So you had your start, you just had your base, yeah.
So we'll, actually, we're making plans earlier today about how we want to facilitate that. This is the time of year that there's a lot more testing required for kindergarten, and just several more than what they do at the beginning of the year because that's their dyslexia screener that's required. And so just, you know, coming up with schedules to help, because that's one-to-one. And so it just takes a lot of support on the, for the teachers to be able to get all that done. And the three short weeks that we have coming back, they're full of lots of other activities that are happening. And hopefully, I'll have you send good numbers when we come back in January.
And have we taken any, I don't know, what kind of testing are we doing now with the next math testing?
Yes, I was going to talk about that in my report. So, but we have science interims this week and we also have math testing for math and science this week. So it's our first science interim, so we'll see.
Ms. Roach, do you think like the lexion that you guys do, is it a good indicator or?
So, yes.
No, it didn't kind of match up with my specific.
Right, with your student. It does, it gives you some good indicators. They say that it is a pretty good outcome measure for, predictor for ACT aspirer as well. But with all of those changes coming down, we don't know. But I will tell you, our teacher sings, sings prices. It's really, it has shown to be very, a very good support for our students.
I love what you're doing there.
Yeah, they do. And they like to bring me their certificates and like, hey, I just passed level five or I'm on level 12. Like, they know where they're at and, you know.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I'm SD Matthews, real proud of that.
Oh yeah, Penguin Matthews, oh yeah. They're very competitive.
We'll go on to the high school bank board. We'll let them, they're going to talk a little bit about what they're doing and give some information.
Where do you want?
Hello, I'm Juan Montesrosos and I am the chairman of this new bank board. I'd like to say about what we do. So currently, we are inaugural, so brand new thing for Huntsville. So we have been trying to get ourselves together, which we have done really well, thanks to, you know, the artists, employees, and which, and our bank board, I mean, in our, sorry, in our council. So what we usually do in the monthly meetings is go over our careers. Like, what we want to do with our careers or whether it be college or something that is in college, because it's perfectly fun to do that. So they help us kind of find out what we want to have with our future and what we need to be doing right now. That's what's there. And then we are able to speak to people in the financial world, which is a really great resource because it comes in with a lot of financial literacy. To be honest, isn't really something common or that most people even know about. Other than that, we are really diligent about being involved in our community. So you will be seeing this probably really soon with the Christmas lighting of the square. We're trying to get that all ready because, as you guys know, artists are really involved with the community. So we are trying to also be involved as much as that whenever we get the chance. This is a really, this is just a really good opportunity and I'm very thankful to be the chairman and to also just be given a spot of those 12 chairs to just learn so much that I wouldn't probably ever learn about. So, thank you very much.
So just for a background, the bank board applications came through this summer. And we had close to 20 applicants. We narrowed it down to 12. They are both juniors and seniors. Those students go each month and meet with Harvest for the morning. They have breakfast with them, sit, and there's some sort of learning topic each month. Last month, they did investments, both short-term and long-term. And were able to look at what that looks like for them as young people, both starting out now and working towards retirement. We know that a lot of young people don't necessarily think about that right off the bat. And so Harvest worked with them specifically on what it is they can be doing now to get to that point later on in life. The month before that, they looked at different account types and styles and what, which ones they should open for what purpose throughout life. And then we have an exciting opportunity to go to the Federal Reserve with Harvest in Kansas City.
I'm pretty sure you're the business person.
Yes, ma'am.
But would you introduce yourself?
Yes, I am Krista Pennington. This is my first year. I am the new business teacher at Huntsville High School. We offer survey of business entry level. And then one of our next steps in our pathway is banking. And so that lends its hand with this banking board with, through with Harvest. And then just provides the opportunity for students to network with one of the banks in our community.
Can you all introduce yourselves?
I am Asher Miller.
Juan is the chairperson. It's pro-chair and Ashen is the secretary.
How about me, because I introduced myself.
And you've done good. I couldn't stand up here and funny people and talk like this and I'm 61 years old.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure all three of these are going to do something really big and great and it's good stuff. And Juan, you want to talk about your, your project with U of A?
Oh, um.
Real quick?
So maybe, I do know I was here for another school board meeting and may, perhaps I talked about my research, I'm not sure if I did. But I did have the opportunity to have some research in biochemical engineering and recently, and by recently, I mean like two days ago. It got, it got accepted in a national conference to be presented along with other post-doctorates and just very, very proud of people. Thank you.
He's going to win the Nobel Prize someday.
Now, I mean, the only other thing that I would add is, again, it's inaugural. So we are learning as we're going this year, kind of figuring out how we want to charter it. But what I love is that we're not just doing financial literacy, we're doing community involvement, we're doing career readiness, getting them prepared for their next step. So it's exciting.
Because even if they don't choose to do something with banking, they're going to need this information.
Exactly, yeah.
And we really appreciate that Harvest being involved in this and supporting our students. That's, that's super awesome.
Thank you all for letting me come to my.
We have the. Our high school bowling team?
Or just me.
Or just you?
Because Cedric went and killed two deer, so now he's not here. That's okay. For those of you that don't know me, I am Latasha Armour. I am the full-time library media specialist at Huntsville High School. And I double as the Huntsville High School bowling coach. I have an extensive coaching background. I coached for 11 years. I coached at Alma, I coached at Salem Springs before I got my masters to come work in the library here. And so I'm the coach of the inaugural Huntsville High School bowling team, the first one recognized by the AAA. And we did tryouts in September. We have a full boys roster, which it only takes six to have a full roster. But when you have a winter sport that kind of sandwiches itself in between football and basketball and volleyball, it's hard to find students that aren't involved in other things. And so that's a good thing about bowling is it reaches all of those students that may not have a place. And right now, we currently have four girls on our team, which is fine. I'm doing a little legwork to try to find a couple more girls. But when we go to matches, it's, they'll still all get to bowl and it'll be fine. We have a full schedule, which for bowling, that means 10 different matches. Our first match will be on December the 5th. Lamar is going to come up and, and play us in our, our home bowling alley is in Springdale. And so it was nice when I was scheduling, a lot of the schools around us, their bowling facilities aren't very good. And so they've all agreed, most of them have agreed to come play us, so we don't have to travel very far. The farthest place, we have to go, excuse me, is Fort Smith to compete against Van Buren because that, they don't have a bowling alley, so they compete there. But we'll go to Salem Springs once, they're going to come to us once. We've got Harrison, Ozark, Lamar. We're going to be in a quad match with Rogers, Rogers Heritage and the other person that they have scheduled. We're going to bowl against Fayetteville. So we're going to see all kinds of different competition to prepare us for our conference tournament, which is in January. And we have 11 teams in our conference. The top five will go to state. Bowling is similar to track and field or golf or any of those sports like that. If you don't qualify as a team, you have a chance to qualify as an individual. And so we have, I mean, for, for our first time, I, I mean, I really have nothing to base it on, but I feel like they're doing a good job and they're having fun. And so we go twice a week, we go on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and we bowl at Springdale. And then we're just ready to bowl against other people because it's just been us since September, so. But, I mean, for the first time, we have, like I said, we have 10 total kids on our roster. Trying to get a couple more girls, but if it doesn't work out this year, at least I'll know for next year what needs to be done. Coach Preston has helped me out a lot with all of my questions. And if I don't know the answers and he doesn't know the answers, he'll try to find somebody who does. And so I just thank you guys for the opportunity to give our kids this opportunity. Because like I said, a lot of them, this is the place where they can fit in because they don't have any other place. And so that's.
Well, and we already have our first bowling athlete that's signed for.
And that makes me look like I know what I'm doing. So that's, that's, I'm like, you just do you and I'm going to stand over here and we're going to, we'll be good. But now that, he's great, he helps the other kids and they respond well to him and they just, you know, they go and have fun and. That's, that's the most that we can hope for right now, so.
That's awesome.
But yeah, so that's all. Tell him thank you. None of them. I'll see him tomorrow though, so I can, I can get after it tomorrow.
And if you're really old and decrepit, you'd remember Huntsville used to have a bowling alley. It had two lanes.
Four.
That's, I have.
Four? No, there's two lanes. You're supposed to line each, might guess it's four lanes, you have to choose.
I heard stories of this bowling alley. I wish we still had one so we don't have to go all the way to Springdale, but that's okay. Keep that, keep that in mind for later.
Okay, next we have our high school softball. Go to present the information for us.
Hi, my name is Kennedy Smith. I'm a sophomore.
My name's Coral Garrison and I'm a senior.
Um, my name is Kylie Conklin and I'm a, and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Annalise Landers and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Kelsey Skates and I'm a junior.
I am Asher Miller. I am also a junior.
My name is Gabby Thompson. I'm a, I'm also a junior, so.
I wanted them to present themselves first. I told them that I really want to be the background of this. I'm the head coach, Jessica Helms, if y'all don't know me. But I really want them to shine in this presentation. It's for them, not for me. It's also for the city of Huntsville that we're, we gave this speech to the city council and they really suggested that we come to you not to ask for anything, but just to present it to you. Because I'm really, one of my goals is to really make sure that Huntsville softball is presentable to everyone. We, this is my second year here, but I really want to make softball one of the star sports here. And I know that it hasn't been for a while. So they have, these two are going to present our present, our speech. The rest of them are not as loud as the rest, as these two. I mean, Kelsey, I will say Kelsey is the loudest. Y'all go ahead.
I'm going to try to get through this without coughing. Sorry. The Huntsville softball program is something that has been taken very seriously in a long time. We'll be the first ones to acknowledge that the students play a large role in creating the respect we desire. That being said, we believe that it is time for the community of Huntsville to recognize the hard work we as a program are willing to dedicate to improving Huntsville softball as a whole. Not only for our high school team, but for, but also for our community use. Huntsville is a very sports-based town. Our most popular events are usually those based around athletics. The people of this community have never hesitated to support the growth of our programs. For example, the basketball team was just given a brand new arena to play in. The field the baseball team plays on has also recently been revamped. We make this point not to ask for your pity or to point out what we're lacking, but simply to draw attention to the fact that our program also deserves to be heard and appreciated.
Although there are a lot of changes that need to be made in order for our facility to be comparable to others in our conference, the list of improvements that we have prepared is small when you stop and think about the amount of issues we currently deal with. So first is safety issues. Our batting cage has multiple holes in it. So not only are you concerned when you're hitting that you're going to hit someone else, but when you're on the field, you have to focus on what you're doing and who's hitting in the cage. Because we've had people hit it all the way to the other opposite dugout. It's not only unsafe for us, but it's also unsafe for spectators and vehicles parked nearby. Our athletic trainer actually had a ball hit into her back windshield, so. Um, there should no, there should be no reason anyone should have to think twice about their safety when standing next to a batting cage. And everyone always has to be aware of their surroundings. So the city has actually talked about getting a new batting cage, but we're not sure where that stands right now. And our mats at home plate are also very visible. If you have seen softball, you should know that they're not supposed to be visible at all. It's a safety concern for like anybody sliding or anything because it gets fingers caught, it gets cleats caught. It's just a big safety concern for everyone involved around that. Um, we also have cosmetic issues, which our fence is a big one. It is a floppy fence right now. So the dead ball rule is like if it goes under the fence, then they automatically get second base. So that's really unfortunate.
You were talking about the outfield fence ago.
Yes, yes, the temporary fence.
Some people may not have been with you on that.
So right now, the, the temporary fence is down because men's league plays on it during the summer. During, when, when we're playing and when county league is playing, that we have a temporary fence. And when they took it down this last year, they said that it was falling apart as they were taking it down. So we're working on getting another temporary fence. Because men's league plays up there, we can't have a permanent fence. So we're working on options that we will be able to have a nicer temporary fence to, to make it more comparable to those that we play.
And back to the mats at home plate, the closest place to get dirt is Oklahoma City. And I think we have to have five or five, four, five-ish loads.
Yeah, we have a booster club, or I have a booster club, to help when we raise money. So they, they are in charge of the money. But when, so the softball field has been used for years. And so we call, I call it a ski slope. The outfield, the field going to the outfield, it ramps up. We need at least five, four to five dump trucks of dirt and we have to have specialty dirt. I would love for it to just be cheap dirt and be able to play on it, but I don't want these girls torn, legs torn up. So it has to have equal parts of sand, clay, and, and the closest place is Oklahoma City. Gas is high, so getting, getting five dump truck loads of specialty dirt from the closest place is Oklahoma City. Other places that we've seen is Mississippi. So the city is trying and we are trying to get more dirt, but we're still looking at options because it is expensive.
Another one of our cosmetic is power washing or painting the dugout. They've been neglected for a long time and I think people would. They've been neglected for a long time and I think people would be more willing to support something that's like aesthetically pleasing you per se. So it just looks nice, it's presentable. And we want to have a sense of pride in things that display Huntsville. And with the fence, we would like to, sorry, I'm going like back and forth, but the fence, we wanna display like people that support Huntsville. And with the floppy fence, you, they're like, you can't really put banners on it, like our boys' fence have banners on who supports them, who helps them and everything, so we would like to do that for our facility as well.
Um, the other one is the functionality issues, our water management. Draining is a big issue on our field. We have to cancel home games, we can't play not only us, but. Everyone that plays on the field, if it's raining on our game day at home, we have to cancel, there's no way that we can play there. And that's also with the dirt too, with the dirt, if we get enough dirt, we can level up the field and it'll help with the drainage system for the field. Both the high school team and the recreation recreational league have been forced to give up home games due to our field not being able to drain properly. Even when we put the tarp on our field to prepare for rainy days, our tarp has so many holes in it that it doesn't help, there's no use in it. Or we have multiple spots in our field where our tarp just lets water in and we can't do anything about it.
And on top of there being holes, even if we were to put it on, we go to take it off and there's so much water collected on it because our field is unleveling in so many spots. That it just drains to that spot and it'll literally just come into onto the field.
And the other one is plug, plug-ins in our dugout, during the colder games, we, it's absolutely miserable, it's very cold. Especially during the coldest part of the year. When you are focused on keeping, it's hard to enjoy the game when you're focused on trying to keep warm. We would love to be able to plug in heaters to keep us warm and so our players are comfortable and ready to play. The plug-ins could also help provide a power to speaker, to our speakers to play our workout songs or just warm up music. Something to get all of us pumped up and ready to go. It'll also help us and fans for during the summer, during practices, it'll help us keep us cooled down and things like our iPad for virtual bookkeeping. And the other one is our scoreboard. As as we all know, our scoreboard is tiny and half the time it doesn't work at all.
Is it scoreboard or score?
Scoreboard, I'm sorry, that's. Sorry, that's not what I mean, scoreboard. Uh, the scoreboard we currently have does not work a good majority of the time. This is a major issue as it provides valuable information such as the batter's count, the number of outs, the inning and the scored plays, coaches and spectators. Uh, without this information, it is easy to make mistakes simply because we don't know situations wise what to do.
Improvements to the softball program would be a huge impact on not only the high school team itself, but also upcoming lady eagles as well as the community. If big changes were to occur in the Huntsville softball program, we would be given the opportunity to excel and bring pride to our town by reaching a new level of competition. The more we grow, the more competitive and engaging our games get, which draw larger crowds and bring an atmosphere of spirit and support to the program. An added benefit of these improvements would be the fact that thriving program would inspire younger generations to get involved in the sport that we love. We want to be able to have pride in our field the same way that those around us do. It is well known that the younger generations are drawn to things that are more appealing. Therefore, a nice well care and well cared for field would be more likely to attract the attention. And the peak of interest in young girls in the community. We want it to be made clear that these improvements are not simply for us, the high school team. The things we are asking for would benefit the majority of the community. The Huntsville softball program has been ignored for far too long. We are willing to be the team that steps up and advocates for the improvements that need to be made.
So in your talks with the city, what is kind of those, are they willing to?
So they are, what they told us is it's not gonna happen soon. They said that it took five years to save for the baseball field improvements and it'll probably take just as long for the softball field improvements. They did say that most of the city council did not know how bad the softball field was. And they are working on that we're getting a new batting cage net. Like she said, we we were at practice one day and someone just came up from the community and was hitting in the batting cage and it came onto the field while we were practicing. So I was concerned about their safety and about anybody's safety who is practicing. So they're working on getting the batting cage net and I have heard. That they're working on getting a new temporary temporary fence. Um, the new temporary fence will be almost like cattle paddles that we, we're gonna be able to put our banners on. I don't.
I was just gonna see if they had, cuz I've seen those over in Rogers, when they play baseball, they just.
Yes, that's basically, that's what we're basing them on.
Yeah.
I've kinda heard the same thing, but.
I haven't for sure heard one hundred percent that it, we are getting it, but uh, that's what I've heard is that's what the idea is.
So basically, you're at liberty of what the city wants you to do up there at the city park.
Yes.
So but could we like get some power washers and go power washing?
We have a power washer.
Like we donated the.
We have a power washer.
They wouldn't object to.
I don't, we could ask.
I think we would, I'm sorry, I think we'd have to get it approved by them, but I don't think they're gonna turn down any help and and like the girl who said.
Probably.
I'm at the meeting that night, Mayor Dodson was very supportive and on board. It's just the process of the the funds becoming available and being there and I know like they said, he he wanted to help with the fence. If I remember correctly, tell me if I'm wrong, they talked about some of the smaller things like the electrical outlets, they talked about being able to knock that out, cuz that's not that big of a deal. And things that weren't just huge money projects, they would try to help as much as they could and then build to the other. So I I don't think they would be opposed to us doing some of that on our own.
That's why I was wondering, cuz you know, I could potentially donate the electric material, you know, for the outlets and the dugouts.
So how much is the dirt and are you calling them, what do you call a dump truck load, these small triaxle dump trucks or semi-load, I mean, it's been all serious.
So that's actually my booster club and I told them that they didn't have to come cuz we had a short, short, we only had a short thing. Um, so I I kind of left that up to them, she, Donna, Kennedy, Kennedy.
I know, yeah.
She is the one in charge of finding dirt at this point. Um, I am really blessed and I don't have to worry about that, they typically take care of things like that and I get to take care of.
Your girl's coaching.
Practice and coaching. Um, so that it would be a question for Donna and I can for sure get it to anybody who needs to have that or who doesn't have Donna's number.
You have a great booster club.
Yes, so when you're in season, who may change the bill, like just the mowing and?
I'm part of both of them.
The mowing would be the city, yes, and.
City.
And are they good about getting it done for every game, like?
Um, sometimes. They, so for the softball field, they they do chalk the field and everything, I know for the baseball field, they chalk it themselves because they practice beforehand. We don't do that, yes, I'm, okay, I'm, this is my first year, okay? I'm getting there.
And I was also wondering if the city had thought about, did they talk about maybe grants or?
So um, I'm also the youth teacher at the middle school, so I'm really big into grants and so I've looked for some grants. I haven't found any that we can apply to yet, if we, if there are grants, then they've already passed the due the due date and so I'm continuing to look for some.
I know a good resource for that would be Matt Smith's wife.
Yes.
Whenever I was on the board for the baseball program out there at Withrow. She wrote some with our best for the kills out there, that's how we got the new fence running the outfield. So you may reach out to her.
Yeah, I know that we're, again, this is another conversation for booster club. But they were talking about getting some sponsorships for our scoreboard. To be able to get it this year, not only for us, but for baseball and everyone.
Sometimes there's places that if you'll let them put their name like Coca-Cola or whatever, you can get a.
Yes.
Yeah, we're, like I said.
They'll, Joshua's going without Withrow, so.
The booster club is really, they're amazing at looking for sponsors and getting stuff, getting stuff like that. Again, if they were here, they could really speak about it, I can only speak about what I have heard recently.
Right.
But every single day, they're they're finding new things. We're actually having a first pitch banquet with baseball and softball. And kinda like a Miranda White game, so we're finding new ways to get involved like all the other sports. But we're working, we're trying to work towards being one of the main sports.
Have you, I know this was a couple weeks ago, have you thought about doing, kinda like what the basketball did with the the auction and all?
That's what, it'll be, so first pitch banquet will be a spaghetti dinner and an auction.
Okay, great.
And Candace Samuels is the bomb on finding grants, so if you, if you don't know how to get ahold of her, talk to the Mr. Rinkle out at CTE. She's really good at that.
I have heard.
I thought you were gonna find a community that really wants to help.
Yeah, I mean, I I believe so too, I just want, I want them to be the forefront. I know, like, I know that I could go ask all day long, but until someone sees who's actually gonna be playing on that field. They're gonna want to help a little bit more and like I said, I, the city asked us to come speak to y'all. Not not to ask for anything, but just to show that these girls are willing and dedicated to what, getting what they need.
We really appreciate y'all letting us come in here tonight and take time to talk to y'all.
Absolutely, we did get new uniforms, all right?
We did, it's our year to get new uniforms.
Yes.
I may have saw some pictures, they look pretty awesome.
So what he's talking about is, um, we got new uniforms from the school. Um, we also, from our fundraising and working Razorback Games last year, we got, we are getting two new uniforms. Cuz I don't know how many of y'all have seen the softball uniforms, um, they're not cute. They're. They're not, they were not, they were not. They're not cute. They were, um, I I think I had better ones when I was in school, um, they are like cotton tank tops. And so this year, we're having two new uniforms from the booster club bought.
We are very excited about the pinstripes. Very excited.
So just, we're just trying to get improvements, cuz we go to people, we go, we play Gravit who has, I mean, say to the art field. They won state this last year and so we just really want to, we want to be proud when we're on that field, just like everyone else is when they're on theirs.
One of the rubs about that is because it's just like Withrow, Withrow Park is owned by the state.
Right.
Everything you do, dinner's gotta be approved.
Right.
It's owned by the state, but it's maintained by the county, so there was nothing to go.
Right, so the city park being that, I mean, if you can get cooperation from the city, it helps.
Right.
So I mean, if they're been willing to cooperate, you'll have a little more.
They've been pretty cooperative, I mean.
That's good.
For the most part, it's. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanna say this, I and I've ran into this with every sports team here. When you have young ladies that are willing to stand up for what they want, what they need and the passion they have for this. Makes it really easy to go to bat for them. And I told them that at the city council meeting, I said, go to bat about softball. I told them that at the city council meeting and I wanna say that here now, is is the fact that. And I I told Mayor Dodson that night, I know that's a city park, but we have skin in that game too, as a district. And we can't just rely on them to do everything, so that, but that makes it, when I see them with the character and with the the passion that they set up with, it makes it a lot easier for me to. Go out and say, hey, these these young ladies need our help, what can we do? And so I appreciate y'all for being willing to stand up for for yourselves and for your program and the passion you have to see it become next level. And so thank y'all for that and we're gonna do everything we can to help you.
So does the city charge the baseball field and the softball team to use the work up there?
There is a charge and I don't know what it is off the top of my head, I do know that they upped the charge. Over the last year or so and I I I don't, I'm, I know they upped it, I don't know what it is and I don't wanna speak out of line and say something.
I like to know that.
I will up that up though, because it was, it was up pretty substantially. And it was after they did the repairs or the the revamp of the baseball field.
I get that, but if we're going to put some skin in it too.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
We need, we need to know what that is.
Yeah, I will get that amount and get that to you.
Well, rumor has it more than double. I think prove that with us, I'm pretty sure it more than doubled.
Well, in, I did, like in Greenland, they have the city, has that nice facility, but the coaches maintain that field.
Theirs is turf now also, so their infield is turf at Greenland.
The softball too, oh, okay, so that just happened, I guess.
I don't know how recently.
I know they're mowing all the time.
It's been since I was in high school, so three years.
Well, they mowed something, cuz I know one of the the softball coaches.
They got a lot of outfield, they still have a lot of outfield.
They got, yeah.
Oh, mowed the outfield, okay.
I mean, they got a lot of youth fields out there by there.
Yeah, so they maintain that, so that's why I was asking about, does it get mowed for you, that maybe during that season, we can make sure. And maybe that would also cut down on cost, which look at, playing is so excited, like, yeah, one more thing to mow.
I guess for the most part, it does, it's it's pretty well maintained.
Okay.
Mowing wise and getting the field raped and chalked and everything for us. Um, we typically don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
But it's a pond every time it rains and it and it don't dry.
Yes, that's. And it's not just for us, um, we, at the city council meeting, we had, um, some county league girls come with, up and talk as well and they had to have games canceled. And I know men's league had to have their game canceled this last week too.
My position is if we're gonna put money into it, like, you know, if we're having to pay for it and putting money into it, we need to, we need to think about this a little bit.
Yeah, we need to get on paper what we're getting for our money. Not just, oh yeah, we'll do that.
Do we get to use the concession stand and keep all the money?
No, we don't, that would be the city, the boys do get to keep theirs, the girls do not keep theirs.
But the boys run their own concession down there and the concession up at the softball field is run by Michelson Park.
And the reason being, like the.
Yes, always.
Um, I know we have to, the baseball had to fix the concession stand themselves, they had to pay. To do that and the money stand at the end, baseball paid for both of those things to be remodeled and fixed.
And I will say, Coach Harris is great, I talk to him all the time, he's also been doing this for seven years. And so I'm I'm getting myself there, like I said, I was here last year and this is my first year as head coach, so I have a long way to go, I understand that. But I also have a great role model, so.
I think you're on a pretty good track too.
Mine, just thinking of that, if the boys could do that, maybe we can ask the city if the girls could have that same deal, put them, that would be, you know, if we had to put some. I don't know if it needs to be fixed ever.
Oh, the concession stands, a new story brick building with air conditioning and everything and it up at the softball.
If you rent the facility for a private tournament or something, then you have to use like a tent or some tables or something, they don't let you use their facility.
For your concession. And a lot of them are that way if it's not put on by that park.
Y'all have any other questions?
Any question I can figure out those down? We have lots of questions, but for the city council.
I'm sorry.
But thank y'all, I guess we really appreciate it.
Well, it helps us if we know all of the details, so.
Right, yes. Well, we really wanna thank you, um, I'll I'll say it for them, but we wanna thank you for letting us come talk. This won't be the last time you hear us, that we're gonna, uh, one of my goals is to get them out in the community more and to be seeing. Especially since now they have to have community service hours. Um, but we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Dodson was very complimentary, now that keeps what we can come about. Not about the details, about them coming to talk, to talk to the city council. There's always avenues to take. We have to be very strategic, I have to say that, you know, there are things that we can and cannot do as a district, just we are basically, we seen that from the city. In essence, but there are things that we can, there are avenues that we can't take down.
I was approached by, I think it was one of the booster club members and not as a board member, just as a, you know, they asked me one. If they thought Withrow field would be better than Michelson up there, that the middle field, it's totally infield on it's worse than that. But it's flat, it don't have a mound on it, which they don't need, but I don't know if the fence is long enough. I think they're required a two hundred or two twenty foot fence on the Burroughs High School softball.
I don't remember what that one is.
I said, the exterior fence and the backstop's nice, but the field itself is rough. And I said, it would take a considerable amount of, but that one up there, what she's talking about is where they drug that. And I said, it would take a considerable amount of example, that one up there, what she's talking about is where they drug that field so much, the grass comes up here and it drops about that much. So if a ball hits that grass and and you're playing behind it, you're gonna eat it.
Yeah.
Don't care how fast you reclick, so you're gonna eat it. And I mean, it's it is, I've seen some of the guys up there to tournaments, and I guarantee you Sheldon could go in here and tell us, cause he's up there a bunch too, that it's 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 it happens, I mean, them guys even eat a few of them. It does need some work, but I mean, you know, being a being a city park, you know, you think the city would be responsible, especially since they're charging you, so I'm kinda, I'm kinda
I like another.
I've got kind of a raspy about that right there, right there with Mr. Dodson, so I may have to miss.
Well, one more reason to get our own facilities.
So uh to build our own facility, just not not it's gotta be approved, if we pay for it, it's gotta be approved by the state and built to their standards. If somebody went and built us a softball field and donated it, it wouldn't have to fall under all this state stuff, right?
I think there's.
But it don't have to be designed by their architects and everything, it's gonna just be regulation AAA, right?
I'm gonna have to check on that.
Check on that.
I'm not sure. In general, they will. I don't wanna miss.
They have standards, they usually have standards, and you have to meet that standard.
And then if you're, you know, if you're trying to host something, there's there's minimum seating capacities, there's, you know, all of that kind of stuff.
Well, you can't order somebody.
Right. But you know, there's
There's children requirement.
I'm not anti-government, but I'm not a real big government fan. But at least, I'll just be honest with you.
Why didn't you just tell us what you?
No, I probably get bleeped. I don't know, Ray Ray Ray's fast enough to bleep y'all around. Not Brady, Alex's brother. Ray, he's fast enough to bleep me. Cause I don't get started. He probably keeps his finger on the mute button, so I've gotta.
We we would have to look at what those specific guidelines.
Right, I understand.
Or need to donate it, now, building, I can tell you, no, it it has to follow architecture plan and state, we've already traversed that that.
Is that if it's built on school property or period for the school to use?
Even if it's donated, at this point, it's even if it's donated, it has to follow strict guidelines. So.
I mean, if it was built on school property, I'd want it to follow.
Right, right, but but you know, somebody went out there and had four or five acres and built one, someone donate this to the softball team. And uh what would be the difference in them donating that or playing up here on the field that we pay the city dues?
I don't I don't have a good answer.
Yeah, I I that's my guess, that's where I'm at, right there, you know what I'm saying?
Steve's from my, we're old, and we remember when every community had their own softball field.
Absolutely.
Everyone.
Everybody, Clifty, Hines.
Wesley.
Mayfield, Wesley, Japt.
Even Goshen had a barbed wire bat bat net, you didn't wanna go back there. I'll play softball, Wesley.
Wesley's went on the river in a big flood a lot of times. It washed it away.
Japt had a two seater.
That house, but I think it's still there, cause we had poker on the other side down there.
That house, yeah.
Juice or gas. Well, I don't wanna know about that. So.
Let's see the street book.
We'll tend to donation part to to see what the rules and regulations are for that.
Just be good to move.
Next on the special reports is the ASBA Board Member Recognition, so we received this uh early la- early at the, or excuse me, near the end of last month, uh we have uh we have a certificate of boardmanship to give away.
Over cheaper.
We're a month worth.
So ASBA will award certain levels of hours that are that are gained by board members, I'm gonna read this uh as far as what the certificate of boardmanship and uh requires. That's only for newly elected members after January one twenty eight eight twenty eighteen, at least twenty-five hours of ASBA training credit, which must include six hours of new board member institute, three hours of ASBA regional being, two hours of additional ASBA hours in the following areas, finance, governance, legal, student achievement, and eight additional hours of elective. And there are multiple levels of of after this as well. Uh this Honey Timber is our recipient. And she is one of seven in Northwest Arkansas to receive that, so I wanna congratulate her for and thank her for that service and for that time. Uh moving on to the next item is the superintendent's reports, um we have our typical reports, we have our student transfer list. We have four students, one coming in, three going out, and if I remember right, I don't think all three of them, but a couple of them had not been here at all, I I don't quote me on that, but I'm almost certain of that. Um the financial report, you see. We are ahead of where we were last year, as far as keeping a balance above the beginning balance of from the year. And then uh our expenditures were I don't know, I'd say they were higher than expected, but they were they were probably right on pace with what was expected. Uh I will I will forewarning you that next month will probably be a little bit bigger dent into that, you could see it I don't mean negative, but go down. Uh we're gonna be doing early payroll this month, we're gonna be doing a bonus this month. So it, you know, the timing on everything is is always. And then the la- the next last thing is the enrollment report. Um you'll see that we our current enrollment as of Wednesday of last week is excluding our pre-K, is two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven. That is still up from the same time last year, same board meeting of last year, it's up from our three-quarter ADM. You see the notable changes there listed out. And then the charts that are there that follow.
So we've got a big difference in numbers going out of some schools and numbers going to be coming into the next year. Like are we good on capacity class?
In the building?
Yeah. So I'm just trying to make a big difference, it's
Your building stuff, yeah.
And there's like nearly a fifty kid difference, it's gonna be leaving and it'll be in, it's gonna be coming in.
Well, and if I remember right.
And even high school, there's a big difference, we're not losing very many, but the big class.
We've had these big classes come through before, so I mean, it is the the capacity is there.
My first year here, we were almost at seven hundred at the high school, but you have got to remember too, we have the CTE building that we ship kids out to as well, so we will need English teachers, but as far as we should have that.
I mean, I don't, when you're in high school, you can barely walk down the hallway.
They hadn't even added the classroom rundown at that point.
It's still that way.
I think it was for five hundred some kids, like who were in school.
He had a big class, I had a little class.
I can part their scene like Moses, though, they moved for me.
Well, I went to high school where middle school was, and it wasn't real crowded up there, but it was pretty crowded, cause we had a whole old building thing.
Well, and also every door opens outside, so outside doesn't seem as crowded as one home.
But they can be in the basement the whole main, I'm my sophomore year.
There aren't any other questions, I'll go ahead and start the administrative reports with Bailey.
Uh I'm gonna keep it brief, cause I'm sure Coach Preston will take up time to give you guys a great update on athletics, and I'm proud that he does that, by the way. But uh I just wanna mention, uh last week, our we were fortunate enough that we had a supportive administration that our I was able to take our whole tech team to a conference last week in Little Rock. It's called Arkansas Conference of Technology, and that is solely a conference that is put on strictly for technol- uh technology people in education. So the content is always great, the networking collaboration's great, and it's truly, it's just the best conference we go to each year. And so I'm very, I'm always appreciative that our whole team's able to go, cause while we're down there, usually uh me and and our team will go do an escape room or something together, and it's just great for uh just team building as well, so we we always really enjoy that, so I just wanna say thank you for that. And then the the last thing I had, which is it's a exciting thing, but uh we uh were a recipient of the COPSS and SVPP grant, the School Violence Prevention Program grant that we applied for through CJI last spring, and so that grant was four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh so we we did get that notification last week or the week before, and so the district, we do we do twenty-five percent of that, so the funded amount through uh see uh through the Criminal Justice Institute will be three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And so we're, um and that's something that we can apply for every year if we want, and so, you know, as long as funding's there, I apply them on, hopefully applying for it again in the spring. Uh but with that grant, what we had applied for, and you have to put in the application ahead of time, and and that's what you're gonna, that's what they approved that you're gonna spend it on. Uh so we're replacing the camera system completely throughout and outside at our high school, and that'll be good, because we we will take those cameras there and we'll filter that down through the other campuses, so everyone, I mean, coverage across the district will be in that sense. Um fencing at middle school, some, uh we some additional bus cameras for our uh some newer buses that didn't have them, or just older ones that we didn't have them on. Uh shadow resistant window safety film throughout the district, that's a big one. Um so that'll be essentially the way we rated it this first round was any building or any window that anyone could walk up to and potentially, you know, try to break into, so that would be any parking lot facing window, any window that's not inside of a gated entrance or something. Um and then additional notification system of hardware and and medical panic buttons, our nurses have requested that, um so so that's the exciting piece of that.
On the windows though, is that going to be in place after?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll we'll coordinate, I mean, we we're not planning on putting this uh I believe we're not gonna, the funding, we won't be able to spend till spring, um but yeah, I mean, we we would just coordinate with that, we have till June of twenty-six to extend the funds.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just didn't wanna.
Sure, I agree, I don't wanna put it on for them just to come and replace the windows. That was all I had.
I thought she was gonna be short.
I felt like that was short.
Um all I can say is the last month was crazy, we had, we closed two hundred and sixty-four work orders. Uh the staff's getting pretty good, we closed sixty-nine uh or sixty-nine percent of them were closed within seven days. So our guys have been hopping, the thirty-one percent that I couldn't close within seven days, I think they all come from Bailey.
Probably did.
So so no, they're a little bit more intense, um and that's not including stuff like uh the St. Paul kiln, all the water issues that we've had in the past month at the high school.
Not my fault.
It's all your fault. Sewer line stopped up and and all that, it it's it's been a busy week, and we're still, our busy month, and this month is continuing on in its pace with sewer problems. I've had three today that.
We've got banks hung up in them or what?
One of them was a Barbie chair.
Was it toxic?
So it was awesome, so I mean, you never know what you find, I mean, but but we were pretty fortunate with with having Mr. Ogden as our as our plumber to come out and take care of a lot of this force. One thing I do wanna kinda give some recognition to is uh Travis Dodson uh donated his equipment and his time to help uh Mr. Trey Hand's, what is it, science?
Environmental.
Environmental science class, pull down that old shed on the back end of uh the St. Paul, the old original gym. And Travis come down with his equipment and his manpower, pulled that down, and Cards donated the dumpster at no cost to us to to haul that off. Um all that was left with us is we had to carry, we've gotta haul off the old wood stove and the tin, so we're hoping to go scrap that and put a little give us a little bit of money back into the district. But uh Travis volunteered his time down there on that, I wanna appreciate that. Other than that, the the kiln project, it's kinda like what you're talking about, everything's slow and and methodical. I've got progressive technologies coming in, um they're scheduled to come in to put the regularized smoke detector in, the pool station in, and all that. Once they get that in, we're gonna be able to sheet raw it, get the electrician out there, uh we've got the vent hood ordered, which is it's one step at a time, so so we're getting there on that. We finally got the fire door in last week from the lumberyard, so it's just slow, and we're getting there, but it's just taking us a little bit more time than I wanted.
Supply chain issues?
Uh supply chain issue. Uh yeah, um doors have been really difficult, I mean, I ordered six doors for the middle school to replace it, I mean, you could literally I mean, they put those night locks in, you can literally just bow the thing over and step right in, and it it's taken me uh ten weeks to get the door in. So, I mean, we're working on it, um on the slow process of her building with the wood doors, on changing them out, every, I mean, that was built in what, nineteen sixty-five? So we've had to get every door in, literally saw a sixteenth of an inch off of the side, a quarter inch off the bottom, an eighth inch off the top. You know, all the holes, mortise all the hinges, so it's not like in ten minutes we switch out a door, it's it's a two hour job, a door, just in the shop before we take the door there. So it's just slow go, I mean.
Twenty-five doors.
No.
There's twenty, there's twenty doors down there in the classrooms.
Well, I think we had a total of twenty-seven on that. So if you know any good door guys, I could really use one. Well, then, my my main door guy's getting tired of doors. So other than that, that's uh I met with the insurance, um gave them a tour of all the campuses. That was interesting, kinda found out why we went, our rates went from what they did, a hundred, what was it, a hundred and thirty percent increase? Which that's a big like negative on my budget line that I get a look at every month. But there is probably two years down the road that will get some of that, they'll reduce that rate down. So they're they're playing catch up like everybody else.
Well, I went to that fall, oh, I watched the Fall Institute thing, and they had the insurance guys, and they said, it's because of this, we just had so many big like hits by uh not us, but the tornadoes, and yeah, all of that, just the rates just went crazy because of that.
Anyone at this school, chicken farms, hollow?
Well, the biggest thing that I learned is we're in a shared pot, I mean, our our insurance is shared with everybody else, basically. So if we have a claim, we need to jump on it, if we've got some kind of major event that happens, we have to jump on it and get on it quick. Because if somebody else beats us to it, once their pot's empty, we're left with our hands hanging, I mean, holding our hands.
Wait until the pot gets cold again.
Well, by that time, we.
I hear you.
I mean, it's, um you know, if we had a tornado come through and took off a campus, we're looking, having to do something for our students, like hush their buildings or something. You know, if we wait seventy-two hours before we start our claim process, we could be, we could be behind. So that's all I've got.
I do wanna say I grew up behind the old gym, that looked so much better.
It does look a whole lot better, we need to get some siding to kinda match instead of that piece of plywood. And you know, and that's all thanks to Mr. Craigin, um you know, he's the one to get the ball. You know, he's the one to get the ball rolling on that. You know, Jeff Patrick, y'all have, St. Paul, I can't talk enough good about Jeff Patrick and what he does for y'all down there. If I had a full staff of them, wow.
He's always busy.
Yeah, he is. He does a really good job for us. Last Friday, we took our largest field trip undertaking of my career. We pulled it off. We took the entire intermediate class over to the Razorback game. We had to get drivers, we had administrators driving, we had teachers, we had coaches, everybody that could drive.
I followed him right there.
It didn't win. I should've called you. I didn't have to go, actually. I was the first on deck. Somehow it pulled us off. But yeah, just a big thank you, acknowledge everybody that went on that. It was good, but...
The kids really enjoyed it.
Do it.
I had to move it off, so they really enjoyed it.
That's okay, but never again.
I think I read it was the, it set the record for the largest crowd at the, at the Independence basketball game, so...
There was several different schools sent their intermediate kids there.
Yeah, there were.
Well, they'll take only the pre-k.
Yeah.
Thanks.
My conversations, thinking about it.
Better than not.
That's all I got.
I know it's shocking. I got a couple things to talk about.
No way.
I know. So, I'll try to be brief. First off, I want to talk about cross-country. We went to the state meet just a couple of weeks ago down in Hot Springs. And on St. Paul or Huntsville, we didn't have enough girls to fill the full team, but we had our girls that were there that competed and ran well. Huntsville boys finished 12th overall as a team, and St. Paul boys finished ninth, which was really good when you consider the hundreds of kids that are running. And it takes five runners to make a team, and we were able to do that. And all of our cross-country coaches at both schools have done a really good job building those programs up this year, and I'm really proud of them and the work that they put in. And I was fortunate enough, I got to go and watched our Huntsville, boys and girls run Thursday, and then St. Paul's ran on Friday. And that Thursday night, when I stayed in Hot Springs, I got to go eat with some of the Huntsville runners and them. And I had a really good time getting to know them because I don't get to see those guys as much as I do the students up here. Had a really good time, so I'm extremely proud of them, and I know that things are gonna get better. Both teams were young. And if, I don't think it was every runner that we had out of both schools, but I'm pretty sure all but maybe one or two ran personal best at the state meet. Now, it's about as good as you can get when you run your best race of the year at the state meet. So, really proud of those athletes and coaches for what they've done. It's already been mentioned, but I wanted to mention that our bowling, Cedric Comer signed his letter of intent to go to Ottawa University, and we're proud of him. And it's exciting to see kids get to go and extend their playing careers and get to do that. So, we're really happy with Cedric and what he's doing, and excited to watch him bowl in person. I've seen him on Facebook a couple of times bowl, and he does a really good job, and I'm never bowling against him. So, know that. I want to mention, too, that Friday night is St. Paul's basketball homecoming. So, if you're not doing anything that night, head down to St. Paul. The both, the boys and the girls teams are doing really good. And if you want to watch kids play hard basketball, go watch St. Paul. Those kids get after it, and they're a blast to watch. When you're playing against a lot of teams that have kids that are five or six inches taller than you, you gotta do something to make up, and those guys and girls play hard, and they're fun to watch. Also, Friday night here at Huntsville in the Activity Center is Veterans Recognition Night. So, Friday night, there's no excuse not to go watch basketball someplace, and for good reasons. And so, our basketball teams will be recognizing veterans on Friday night up here as well. Something that I did, not because I felt it had to be done, but I thought it was something that was needed. Y'all, I'm a big character guy. I think that's, I think I've shared that enough, that you should know that. And I didn't hear anything that made me think, "Boy, that's just bad. We've gotta stop." But I want to make sure that everything we do as a district represents us the way we want to be represented. So, I connected with a group called the Neptune, Neptune Player Group. And what that is, is they have basically created us a radio station for all of our athletic events here at Huntsville right now. We can extend that to St. Paul hopefully soon. But what they have is a database that has over 40,000 songs that their screeners have cleaned or edited. And so, and I'll tell you this, and I used to do this at my old school when I was a coach. If a cuss word was in a song and it dropped it and it just left a blank, I wouldn't play it because it's not fooling anybody. You might as well just say it if you're gonna drop it out. And what these people do is they take those songs, and if there's a word or if it talks about something inappropriate, they remove that from the song and just shorten it. If it's not able to be shortened and still sound like the song, they just kick it out and say, "We're not using it." And so, they have a database of over 40,000 clean songs that our athletes, I've already sent out links to our basketball players to pick songs that they'd like to play on their playlist. And they've sent that back in. It's available for all sports. We're gonna be able to take it to baseball and softball. We'll be able to use it in football. And if you've been to the arena either Thursday night or Saturday, you got to hear a little bit of it. They also build in little commercials for Huntsville, and it'll say, "Welcome to Huntsville," and "Welcome Eagles fans" and stuff like that. So, it personalizes it, and it sounds like a radio station. And I think for anyone who comes into our arena, I can push play on that button and we can play music, and I don't have to worry about what's gonna come out. And that's great news for me. And I think that's really good for our school, too. And it's gonna be something that is gonna impact a lot of other people, especially visitors when they come. It's just, just looks good for us. And so, I wanted to let you know that we've got that set up. A couple of things that I do want to talk about finishing up, and then I'm gonna be done. One of these, Mr. Warren knows about one of them. He might not. So, if I duck and disappear, I want you to know this. And I mention this now because it's something we have talked about in the past. I have a collection of adults that if I need anything, I can call and say, "Hey, can you come help?" And if there's any way they can do it, they're coming. And it doesn't matter when. I mean, it doesn't matter how last minute, they do that. And, you know, we pay them through athletics for that. But looking at it, I would like, and I have it typed up here, and I can present it as needed, and this is where Mr. Warren might throw a pin at me or something. I would like to increase their pay a little bit to show that I appreciate what they're doing. Because a lot of it, I'm just gonna be honest, I don't think it's worth their time for what they're getting. And if they're helping take care of us, I want to try to show to help take care of them. And I'm not talking anything drastic. I'm talking about going from what averages out to about $12 an hour, up to around $14 or $15 an hour, just to make it worth their while. It doesn't cost the school a dime. It's gonna come out of gate, concessions, whatever, we need it to. But those people that I know I can call and say, "Hey, I've gotta have help," and they're coming, I appreciate that, and I want to show them that. So, whatever steps I need to do to do that, which is probably not what I'm doing right now, I would like to do.
Nah, I can confirm that.
So, are we talking like timer, timekeepers?
Timekeepers, bookkeepers. And here's one, concession stand workers. Because we've had two workers now that have gotten certified to work in the basketball concession stands. So, now we can use the deep fryer and the grill and all that stuff. So, we're gonna be able to do that this year. And so, those people have to get certified to do that. And so, that's something that I'd like to do. Mr. Warren, I'm sorry. I'll talk to you about that.
Hit me up tomorrow.
Will do, sorry. So, I've written this sheet that I have. But anyways...
Well, if it's coming out of the...
No, it'll be...
Right? Do we need to make a motion to increase that since, is there...
No, I'd rather receive what he's got written down.
All right, I tried. Last thing, y'all are...
No way.
We've talked about a lot of needs tonight. Softball came in, talked about needs. We've got a new bowling team that has needs. And this is something that, after all that talk, I hesitate to even bring this up right now. But I truly feel this is a huge need and maybe one of the biggest for Huntsville schools, at least in the immediate future. I have gone out, and Mr. Warren knew this, so, not a lot on this one. I've gone out and secured some bids to work on getting football field turfed. The amount of money we spend on that field for it to be in, this year was in pretty decent shape because the coaches worked their rear ends off on it and were able to keep grass on it most of the year. But we also had half a pallet of sod donated. We had about 1,200 pounds of ryegrass seed donated. And so, a lot of that, we didn't have to pay for because people donated, which is great. But if you walk across the middle of that field, you get seasick because there's so many dips and so many of that. And plus, it's hard as concrete. I'm working on getting a concussion test done on the field.
Oh, I've got a grandson that's been out for six weeks over.
Right.
He's the one that definitely missed the last game.
Right, so, there's been a lot of that going on. And so, one of the companies that I gotta bid on and be upfront and honest, it's the highest bid, but it's the best we could get. And I would like to pursue seeing the donations that I could raise to help get this, get this going. This company that I'm going, it's called the Hellis Group. They are a cooperative that contracts out all the work. They do everything for you. They work out who's gonna come and do the work up until the point where they come themselves and install. The amount that we're on that field, when you consider football, Pee-wee football, then it goes directly to soccer. That Bermuda grass on there is not built for that. It's needs to have a few months of recovery time after each season.
When it's dormant, when it's hardest on, when it's laying there dormant is when you damage the Bermuda grass. That's when soccer is played.
And soccer's on that, the end of football's on that. And so, it's just really hard on it. And this next year, I can also tell you this, Coach Henderson has already told the junior high football teams that they will be coming back after school to practice, which we haven't done in the past. But we can't expect our junior high teams to compete with only 45 minutes of practice today, a day, and that's best-case scenario.
They gotta, they gotta leave, drive down there, change clothes, practice, change clothes, and go back. And how long is a class now?
Well, it would be, they start out a little bit earlier because they start their first period.
Yeah, but seventh grade does it.
No, it's 50 minutes.
I live over there, ninth, eighth, and ninth graders.
Ours are 50 minutes, so I don't know what middle school is, but high school.
I will just say, I was super excited to already have summer schedule for football.
But even with starting at 7:30, it's still not very long compared to high school.
Yeah, and it's, they need to come back and get a little bit extra work. And so, he's already told them that. The issue with that, though, is our practice field's only about 30 yards long. You can't have senior high practicing on that and junior at the same time. So, that means you're gonna have to put one out on the field, which is gonna be even more wear on the Bermuda. So, in order for us to do what I feel like we need to do to take that next step to be successful, this is something that really, really needs to be looked into. And I know other coaches have looked into it recently. I understand that. I've got a few ideas for fundraising that I want to go and talk to some people in town to see what we can get. One of the great things about this company, too, is they give you an eight-year payment option. So, you don't have to pay the entire bill upfront. You can pay it out over eight years, which is the warranty on the turf anyways.
So, is that rubber pellet down on the turf or the sawdust down?
It's a rubber pellet. They have a rubber pellet on theirs, too, that is cool. It's a cooling pellet, which is supposed to drop the temperature by about 10 to 15 degrees. However, the sales rep told us for our climate up here, we would only reap the benefit of that maybe one month at the most, based off of everything. And he said, "I'm not sure one month is worth the $50,000 extra dollars it would take to do those rubber pellets." And I said, "Well, I appreciate your honesty on that." One of the things also on the proposal that they gave me is it's turnkey, which means they would come in and do everything that they need to do. And when they drove off the field, we could walk on it and immediately play. So, there are things we can do in this proposal that will lower the cost as well. For instance, I talked to our soccer coaches today. One of the things in here is they have soccer goals they would install for us. Well, we're not gonna need those. We have good soccer goals. So, that's gonna take the price down. When they come and level the field, if we just let them drop the dirt someplace on campus and we move it from there, we don't have to pay for dump trucks to come in and move it. So, that's gonna drop it quite a bit.
We lost this here a couple of years ago, so...
Sure, yeah. And so, all those things fit in where we can drop the price down a little bit more. But I just wanted to let you guys know before I went too far and got myself out of line again twice in one night, that this is something I'd really like to explore and look at. Because I think it's a, it's, yeah, I want it. It'll be really cool. But we need it. It's something that the football program needs, the soccer program needs. It's gonna be good for our Pee-wee kids coming up.
Are we gonna have to move bleachers and stuff, too? Or will it lay right there where our field is right now?
They will come in, and they've already, I have, I'll show you a picture of when we're done, but they will come in, level everything off to the bleachers, and lay everything right up against the existing barriers that we have right now.
Would we be able to have the track around it or is there not enough room?
We don't have enough room for a track. That would have to be a whole different facility. We just don't have the space for that right now.
And how long does turf last?
It typically lasts, the warranty on this is eight years. Most places will go between 10 to 12 years before it eventually wears out. So, bigger schools than us will get theirs changed out about every 10 or 11 years. Smaller schools that I've been used to that have it, I'll try to stretch it to about 15 or so in a lot of cases. So, and as long as you take care of it, it lasts pretty well, so...
How long from when they start the project? Did they tell you about...
They told me that if we, if they came in, as soon as soccer ended, it's about a 90-day turnaround. So, if we came in as soon as soccer ended, they could have it ready for us by the first of August, which would be right in time for football season to get started, so...
Coach Henderson can make do?
Well, he would just, for the summer, he'd do what he did this past year. And then, once that's done, it would just open it up for a lot more possibilities.
They did a lot of times, eighth and ninth grade and senior high practice together just for the simple fact that all the room they had and they needed to practice. Because, I mean, you don't come in here in July and build a program by May or August. I mean, he tried, but it don't work.
They have grants by chance?
Uh, I can look and see. I don't know that answer, to be honest with you. I haven't looked that far.
Is there a safety grant up there, you know?
Athletic lines?
I don't know. I will check and see. You mentioned safety, and that brought up another point, too. This company that, Hellis, that does it, they have 14 of the current turf fields in the NFL right now. So, we're getting the best of the best. And they're putting the field in for the Indianapolis Colts this summer. So, 15 of the NFL teams that have turf will all be this company. It's the same one Grabbit has, and I believe Tintory's using them this year, too. They're about to get turf.
It's nasty if anybody local has been using it.
Right, and Grabbits is great. Coach Mitchell says great things about this company over there. But they have a pad that we would get, that they put under there, that's a composite rubber pad that prevents concussions or helps prevent concussions. And then, they said that the guy that came, when he came and gave us his cell, his pitch, their turf with that pad is .01% as safe as natural grass. So, they tested it out because a lot of people say turf is dangerous for you and it can cause you to be injured. Their turf is 1/100 of a point as safe as natural grass. So, it's as close to natural grass as you can get on the turf field. And that's why so many NFL teams have used it. So, it's a...
What is the dollar approximate size?
The turnkey with that pad was about 1.2 million. And so, I think with some of the things we could get knocked out, we could get it down pretty close to a million, maybe a hair or under, but...
Which is kind of what, in the past, has been kind of the number.
Right, and the other, and I'll tell you this, the other two bids that we got were between 950,000. But the quality of this, I think you pay, you get what you pay for.
Absolutely.
And when you're doing something this big, you might as well get the best you can get, so... So, anyways, I wanted to let you guys know about that, too, and that I would be starting to reach out to some community folks about some fundraising options that we can put, we can put, not banners, but we can put patches in the field with their logos and things like that to make that work and try to offset some of the cost of it, so...
Yeah, just asking because I don't know, but the bleachers, are they all in good shape? We don't have to worry about...
Everything I've seen, everything I've seen up in our bleachers, everything's good. They're in good shape. They're not moving or anything like that. I've not seen any issues with those, so...
Except for people dropping stuff underneath?
Yes, we do. I do have to get them cleaned out from underneath, yes. And I spend about half a game under the bleachers every day, so...
Yeah, phones, cell phones.
Peas, bones, a cane, sippy cups. All right, I'm sorry that took so long again.
Are we, are we on track for merchandise for the basketball game?
Yeah, it should be here. I didn't get a text today, but they... I didn't get a text today, but the, our guy told me they left the printer last week and he said I should get them Monday or Tuesday. So I didn't get a text today, so I'm hoping they're here tomorrow.
Sit down. And we have people to run that?
Working to finalize that schedule on that. So I don't have that officially done, but I'm working to finalize that.
That's something we can get our student athletes and stuff to do for community service, right?
And student athletes or regular student clubs, things like that?
Yeah, yeah, they get their community service, do they, right?
Right, yes, sir.
Good day.
Enters my.
Hey, I didn't notice, is the cookie cokers sign up?
Yep, I'll fill up after the dictation.
Okay, I just said pay attention. Thanks, Bailey.
I'm done, I'm sorry. You toned it, didn't you?
No, my arm is getting buzzed. Okay, so I don't know if I told you all this or not, but Lily Samuels, she applied for and was accepted to Bozeman's Advisory Council. So she's been working with them. She had her first meeting. It was right after parent-teacher conferences. It was on that Friday. So she's, she's gonna be great with that. For the first nine weeks, we had fifteen kids with perfect attendance, which one of them has since done something to his knee because he's a football player. So anyway, he's been out, but it was after the nine weeks. And then we had seven educators that had perfect attendance for the first nine weeks. So that's, that's really good stuff. The nurse, Nish Plumley, she's also, I've asked her to do this for several years now. Seniors have to be certific, CPR, CPR aware. But we make them certified where they actually have cards. That's not a state requirement. That's something that I want the kids to have before they get out of here. We're two-thirds of the way there, so we've, we've got a hundred and forty-five in the class, so that's more kids that we're sending out CPR certified into the world. Also, too, I wanted to let y'all know that we had our Miss Huntsville pageant on Saturday. Michaela Ferguson was crowned as Miss Huntsville, which she'll be a great Miss Huntsville. Lily Samuels was first runner-up. Dixie Emmett was second runner-up. Mina Thomas was third runner-up. Hallie Howerton got Miss Congeniality. And Chloe Dennis was crowned favorite and Miss Photogenic.
Always forget I'm gonna pay Preston to do my presentation. I just feel like he does such a good job speaking. And first of all, thank y'all for all that y'all do. I know this is the month of Thanksgiving, and so I just have to say thank y'all for all that you do for us and our students. Tomorrow, we will have our Veterans Day program. It will be at the Charles H. Berry Gym, starting at nine fifteen. Both the music teacher and intermediate, Ms. Phillips and Ms. Roach at my building, along with our counselors have worked really hard. And, you know, we talked a little bit about that before the meeting, but that's something that hadn't been really big in our community. And COVID kind of took that away from us, but the last couple of years been building that up. And I know that's a huge inconvenience in basketball season and asking athletics to give up space, but we're appreciative of that. And Blaine and the maintenance department for setting up a million chairs for us and then taking them down on a game night. So I'm just very thankful for them to be able to present something that's so important. I think it's very important for our students to develop a sense of pride for their community and for the veterans and all that they do for us. So Thanksgiving dinner is Friday in the world's tiniest cafeteria. So we are kind of doing something a little bit different. Half of our grade levels will, each grade level, half of them will eat in the classroom with their families and guests, while the other half are in the cafeteria, because there's just no way to have as many guests as we anticipate happening. Last year, I think it was over seven hundred that we served. And just adding even more students this year, that's just a huge challenge for us. So again, Jill's not here to thank for, you know, all that they're doing. Maintenance having to come in and help us, you know, plan ahead for how the meals delivered ahead of time to the classroom so that we just alleviate as much congestion as we can and get everybody fed before Saturday.
Don't break nothing Friday.
I don't know, before the actual Thanksgiving, I don't know. But anyway, so that's Friday. And I know you're always welcome to eat with us any day, but we'd love to see you Friday if you want. And then the last thing that we have coming up before we'll meet again is our Jingle Bell Ball. So put on your dancing shoes and join us December seventh. That's gonna be our parent involvement event. So we'll have some book readings, some game setup, math games and different things, but also just enjoying the season. Last year, we did the Boobash and we just changed it up a little bit and did the Jingle Bell Ball this year. So that will be on December seventh, I do believe.
Well, first of all, Harry, I can't believe you didn't give me a shout-out for driving the bus.
She didn't have a problem.
I mean, it was very interesting. I said my four-wheeler at home was a smoother ride. And I worked for an hour and a half at Fredrick Mountain.
We had a driver go down at two-thirty.
I said, are you sure there's nobody else? Are you positive I'm the last option? He said, I promise.
Definitely.
Okay, so we did it. We got it done.
How much stuff did you buy at the banquet?
Too much, too much.
I kept seeing your, your number go up.
I know. And then I got home like asking my kids, you want this? Do you want this? Anyway, it's a good cost. Oh, last Friday, the transition special ed department, the kids from that class, they planned and cooked, prepared and then served to about forty people, all of the people that have positions like mine all around the area. We had a meeting at Carollectic, so we were the host, and they did amazing. And people just gave them a standing ovation and they were so pleased with them. And they presented a little PowerPoint on things that they do and making their T-shirt and how they make their T-shirt and their glow forge. So they, they wore their aprons and they were super excited and they did a really good job. So kudos to them. And we're gonna share more with you guys in January about our transition program, so. And then on the twenty-ninth of this month, we're hosting here an information breakfast for homeschool parents on services that we will still be able to provide through proportion of funding it's required. And this is a new thing that we hold a meeting to tell them all this stuff. Some of you, I saw some of you had shared that already. So that will be at eight-thirty on the twenty-ninth. That's all I have. Well, it's the season of testing and so we're getting really ramped up trying to beat the holiday crazy. That's keeping everybody busy and hopping. That's, that's where I've been. I don't make my time to Coach Preston. I really don't have anything.
That's the only reason I show up is to listen to you coach.
I appreciate that.
These guys' hair all fixed nice, no pad on today.
That's pretty good.
He's like kind of John and Dean off your KK radio station in the morning. He's only looking forward to hearing from him every time he's got something to say, because he never disappoints.
And he's, I'm gonna brag on him, he's doing a fabulous job. I want y'all to know that.
You hear that, you can hear that throughout the community.
Yes, and he's always nice and friends. It's good.
Thank y'all.
He loves to.
That's all I'll say about that.
I just have a few things, sorry. We met, I met with Boston Mountain, you know, we didn't receive that grant to get in through them. But we are looking at applying for something in the, in the spring that will, is a different grant. It's more a state, a state-funded. It's, it's what you see in a lot of different schools like Springdale and those areas. We'll see how that goes. We have the location already. It's just got, we've got, you know, they're different, it's, it's a different grant and it has different fill-in guidelines and expenditures and things like that, so.
So we're not giving up yet?
No, we're not. And honestly, we've, they, they've collected a lot of that information already. So there's, there's not a, at least what I can see, that wouldn't be restarting everything. They've already gotten a lot of that information together, so. So look for that and, you know, I think it comes out in January or March. Or maybe it's granted in March. Fly forward to January. Wanted to, Mr., Coach Nellaf is not here, but St. Paul High School got the Arkansas School Recognition Award again for having top five percent graduation. A hundred percent of their kids graduated last year. At least a second year in a row, maybe more. But they are very excited about that. That comes with monetary reward for those teachers and for that building. And they figure out, they get to kind of figure out what they want to do with it. And last year, I don't remember what they spent on, I've gone blank, but they did something collectively for the building itself. Like they, they bought some, they bought something. I don't remember what it was, but they, they, they put it to good use for sure. Last thing that I have, CPDC was supposed to meet today and they've postponed it till after Thanksgiving. I just wanted to update. I had an update for them and I'm just gonna put it out there now so that everybody else can hear. We, we went through and we gave the bonus this past, past month and we appreciate that. We are looking at, we're studying this classified salary schedule specifically to see where we need to make improvements and what, what we need to do with them to, to get potential raises to, to the, to our classified staff. Our goal is to come back and present that in March to them to be implemented in the next fiscal year. And then if, if finances are there, which I would expect that they are, then we would also retro, retroact that for the fall this year as well. So, you know, you're looking at a new salary schedule for the upcoming fiscal year, but then also potentially another little tiny, not tiny, another little bonus that might be paid out to them at the end of this contracted year as well as retroactive, whatever that increase would be is what they might get. So that, that is our goal and that is our, that is our, that's what we have our sights set on. I don't know that it, it's not unreasonable to do it right now, but we have to kind of see where we are on everything. But ultimately, we do plan on creating a different salary schedule that will include increases at minimum for them for the next fiscal year. And that best case scenario, we'll back paying for this year as well. So that, that was my update. I would go on to the new business, if that's okay. Or have any other questions? We only have one action item on our new business this month, and that is the approval of the proposed budget for 2025, if you remember right. Last year, we did this, we did it in March, if I remember right, maybe February. We are required to put out a budget and publish it in the paper. Basically, it's two years ahead. It did not include what Coach Preston was, Coach Preston was on that. No, I'm just joking. We, you know, we work with, with our financial advisors on this. They, they help us out. They, they make adjustments. I give them kind of some guidelines of what, you know, what we want to look at for what percent do we need to increase here and there. Then they come back and they, they present it to us. It is non-binding, like we're not held to it, but it is something that is required by that law that's in there, if you see. So that is what is in that packet. I would, unless there are more que, any questions? Would it entertain a motion to adopt, or excuse me, that approves of the proposed budget as presented?
Are there any questions on the proposed budget? I get a motion to approve? Motion by Josh, second by Steve, all in favor?
Okay, thank you very much. Going on to the personnel tab, I wanted to point out, foots in, in front of you, outside of the binder is one that has a highlighted name. There was a mistake on my part and I didn't put that name on the, on the list initially. Should, yeah, should have the name highlighted on the very bottom. That is amidst a special education paraprofessional that we would like to have on that list as well. I don't like putting names out there to you on the day of, but after touching base with a couple of you, I thought this would be okay. So otherwise, I would, I would take a motion to approve the personnel as presented as well.
Any motion?
Before we, I just wanna make sure on the contract changes for the three drivers, that we are gonna look to see if it's a possibility to make that retroactive from the first.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve that.
Connie, second by Josh, all in favor?
Harry's been busy. Well, sadly, they've been driving all year. We need to do better.
All right, for personnel, our classified resignations, Brittany Sparks, migrant clerk, paraprofessional, October thirty-first, 2023, hires. Andrew McGee, Watson Primary Nutrition, hundred and eighty day, November first. Norm Roach, Transportation, hundred and eighty, November sixth. Shalon Williams, Transportation, hundred and eighty, November sixth. Kimmy Watson, Transportation, hundred and eighty, November sixth. Vicky Nolan, High School, High School Nutrition, hundred and eighty, November thirteenth. Stacy Guzman, migrant clerk, paraprofessional, hundred and eighty day, date to be determined. Teresa Mahoney, Watson Primary Special Education Paraprofessional, hundred and eighty, November twenty-seventh, 2023.
Any of you guys have anything to say to the market?
Thank you so much.
I just have a lot of stuff for our evaluations.
Okay.
So. I don't know about the academics. They weren't all here to ask questions, so I just set it for later date. So I printed off different forms. This is Mr. Warren's evaluation from when before the stuff that we asked him to work on and his evidence to press. So I'm gonna pass these down to you guys so that you all have hard copies, because I'm a hard copy person. I know he emailed it. I've got it on my computer. I've got it, so.
I've got it, I've got it. He emailed it.
He emailed it and I'm a hard copy person and so I.
I'm a hard copy person, too, so I printed mine down.
I can stay awake reading the paper better than I can with my phone.
Yeah, exactly. And so I also printed off two different evaluations forms. And I know some didn't like the old one, so I'll wear this. We're gonna go and see what can we choose to do, so. That one? And these are what you guys filled out last, well, Natalie, you weren't here. So every year, we have to evaluate Mr. Warren. And this year, his contract's up, so we have to decide if we want to continue or look elsewhere. And so these are the two forms that I found. It's very extensive, but you guys will get those back to me before December fourth. I know that's kind of a little close, but we knew Josh was gonna be out of town for our regular meeting, so we're gonna do a special meeting just for evaluation. What'd you say?
Did y'all hear the last part?
No, sorry.
The last part. We are going to hold a special meeting for this on December fourth. So you guys can get these back up here. I know for you, Bobby and Natalie, it's not being a little difficult. You guys, you guys wanna mail it up here or email it? We can do that.
Drop it up at daycare?
Drop it off at daycare. I'm there five days a week. So which one do we want to use? Do we want to use the original one or do we want this other one? This one is from the ASBA that I found on there.
Oh, so we probably not go with that one.
Well, so does it correspond with the goals?
It really breaks down everything and you couldn't.
Kind of give you a little more line out among certain things?
Yes. Okay, so like, A is there, B, so I don't think, I, yeah, how do we connect? Like when it says action one A. How do we know when action one A is?
Well, you go, it's, thank you. This is kind of like the, I think the, this part of it is connected with the blue part. It's the source from the blue part.
There we go.
So, um, if you go to the blue, one B, page five, um, it'll be Glick collaboratively develops and implements a shared vision initiative.
I think. So we need to make a motion?
No, it's just, just, for us to.
That's what we prefer, yeah.
I would prefer this one because it's more specific. This one, remember I messed up and scored it the wrong way, like I went backwards.
This one is very detailed, it's hard to vote. Maybe, no, but yeah, something. So.
We don't have to vote, just collectively yes or no. You want the new ASBA one or the old one?
I want to use this one.
I want to use this one.
I mean, if we're gonna do a good job.
So we'll do this.
So you want to open them back?
Sure, and I can.
This is the old one. That's what these filled out in this note, what, how he's meant to go. And it would need this. And this one we don't need.
Having a special meeting.
December fourth.
Oh, have, it's just me.
Does that mean you want that back?
I need this four year, that way I can kind of tally it together.
Yes.
But we're not having to need or just get it back.
On the board.
Oh, on fourth?
On the board, we are going to do the evaluation on December fourth.
Okay. So, don't you need it back before then?
Yes.
That's what she was saying.
Yeah, okay, please.
I know with Thanksgiving, that kind of puts it, but if you guys could get it back for the week of Thanksgiving or the beginning of that week after, that would give me time.
Okay.
Can you get a call? Can we have a call?
I care for the executives.
I can get him back.
Okay, thanks.
So is there anything else?
Um, I would like to go to executive session.
Those guys have a question.
I absolutely agree, except for. And then those looking up should fill out.
So Ms. Timberg has requested to go to executive session for a comment. Um, she asked her, do you guys do not want to get out of action?